March is Women's History Month. It's a time we set aside to honor women's contributions in science, business, sports, social movements, and so many other fields. For centuries in America, women's contributions in these fields were often overlooked. As a result, they were omitted from history. That's why we celebrate Women's History Month and the opportunity it gives us all to get a more complete picture of our American history. It's important that we use times like this to teach new generations about those women we all know, like Rosa Parks, whose refusal to surrender her seat to a white passenger on a bus helped launch the effort to end racial segregation in America. Like Susan B. Anthony, an abolitionist who became one of the leading figures in the movement to gain the right to vote for women. And like Claire Booth Luce, the first American woman appointed to a major ambassador post. This month also gives us an opportunity to learn about those women whose names we don't know as well. Like Alice Ball, an African-American chemist who in the early 20th century developed the first successful treatment for leprosy, a debilitating disease that once left its victims ostracized from society. And like journalist Nellie Bly, who posed as a mental patient in 1887 to go undercover in a women's mental asylum in New York City to expose the terrible conditions patients were subjected to. Her report led to lasting institutional reforms and mental health care. And like chemist Stephanie Qualick, who in 1965 created a lightweight and durable new fiber that later became Kevlar, which is used to create bulletproof vests and helmets that protect the lives of our law enforcement and military. Women have invented new medicines, fought as heroes on our battlefields, and enforced the laws in our communities. They led in the effort to end slavery. They have created businesses and built hospitals, and they fought to secure their own right to vote. Women have played pivotal roles in building this country. The United States wouldn't be the economic superpower and the world's beacon of liberty without their contributions. On the home front, on the war front, and in the workplace, women have served and shaped our great nation. That's why Women's History Month is such an important opportunity for us to pause and honor their profound contributions. As we recognize them, let's also honor the everyday women who make our families, communities, economy, military, and nation so strong.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our March 14, 2022 Board Work Session. I want to welcome everyone here, any visitors or administrators, school leaders. Welcome you here and thank you for all that you do. As we embark on Women's History Month, we would like to take a moment to pause for a moment of silence as we continue to celebrate the life and the legacy of one of our leaders, Ms. Charlene Robinson at Rigdon Road Elementary School. And any other school personnel that we may not directly know, we're going to acknowledge them at this moment with a moment of silence. Thank you so very much. As always, we have our Director Librarian, Mr. Alan Harkness, and Director of the Columbus Museum, Marion Rickner. Thank you all for joining us. This month, and this, or at least this week, is also School Board Appreciation Week, March 14 through the 20th, 2022.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. Governor Brian Kemp has proclaimed School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia this week. School Board service is often a thankless job, as you all know, but we appreciate our board members for their commitment to the students and the community you all serve. The Musquegon County School District joins in this statewide celebration to salute the efforts of our local school board members. The week-long observance calls attention to the contributions made by our local Board of Education. As community leaders, school board members serve as advocates for the children in local public schools and must study, evaluate, and decide what actions are in the best interest of those students. I would like to, at this time, just read the proclamation that reads, "Whereas our children's education is key to our state's continued prosperity and success, and whereas for Georgia to continue to grow, we must commit to providing trained teachers and adequate resources to all schools, and whereas across Georgia, men and women serving on school boards have demonstrated a strong commitment to quality public education by securing necessary resources, promoting academic standards, and fostering partnerships within the communities. And whereas Georgia's Boards of Education collaborate with school systems, parents, and community leaders so that students can become educated, productive members of our state and nation, now whereas on this occasion, the state of Georgia commends all school board members for their dedicated service to the well-being of our youth. Now therefore, I, Brian Kemp, Governor for the State of Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of March 14, 2022, as School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. A witness thereof, I have thereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Executive Department to be affixed this 13th day of January in the year of our Lord 2022, signed by Governor Brian Kemp."
Brother Kemp from church.
Yeah, Brother Kemp. But I also want to recognize that our board members have a wide range of service, starting with Ms. Pat Hughley-Green, our Board Chair, 17 years of service in District 1. Ms. Lori McCray, six years of service, District 5. Naomi Buckner, 20 years of service in District 4. Mark Cantrell, 12 years of service, District 6. Vanessa K. Jackson, six years of service, District 3. Kathy Williams, six years of service, then reelected with four previous years of service for District 7. Kia Chambers, eight years of service at large. Nikki Tillery, newly elected, nine months of service, District 2, and is also up for reelection currently. And Dr. Philip Sly, four years of service currently, reelected with 21 years of previous service in District 8. We just want to thank all of you and accept, I hope you will accept our token that we have for you at each of your places. It's a very nice leather mobile phone, yep, designed and printed by our print shop. Danielle Miller and her team have printed this for you all, so hopefully as a token of our appreciation and that of our community. Thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a multipurpose.
Yeah, it really is.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Lewis. Thank you to the print shop. Your work is always phenomenal. And thank you to each of the board members for your, the time that you take and the commitment to this thankless work. So we really appreciate the team effort and the team attitude. So thank you for all that you do. All right, five point. Next up is the Policy Committee.
Public Agenda.
Public Agenda, am I skipping all the way down? I'm ready to go. Just got here. That's what happens with the people who come in late, always trying to be the first to leave. All right, Public Agenda. Today, we have Ms. Lou, or Mr. Lou Rudd. Not here, all right.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Dr. Lewis.
I'm sorry, I do want to make one correction for Ms. Williams, if I can get this right. Ms. Williams served eight years, no, I want to, for the record. Served eight years at large, four years in District 7, then reelected, and in the middle of my second term in District 7. So I just wanted to make that accurate for the record.
Yeah, I thought so. I thought so. Now, we're getting to our committee reports. Education Committee, Ms. Buckner.
Madam Chair, we have one item on the agenda, and that is the Spring Assessment Plan Update. And I see Mr. Knoll is already at the microphone to tell us about it.
Good evening. It is, oh, come on, guys. It's Monday. All right, so we're getting into the time where we're thinking about assessment. Not quite there yet, but we wanted to get in front of you an update because the last couple of years, to give you a little background, were very different. We had testing canceled in the spring of 2020, and in the spring of 2021, the feds and the state came back with additional guidance to us, really saying that we, for those students that were virtual students, they would not be coming in or not be required to come in to test. And so we ended up with about 53% of our kids coming back. That was largely reflective of the number of students that we had out in virtual. For those impacted testing grades, we did see some families also decide to kind of opt out, even though Georgia's not an opt-out state. So what we intended to do here this evening really was just to sort of reorient everyone to the requirements and also just to share a little bit about what we're doing to get things ready as we try to get that message out. So, let's see, there are currently no waivers at this point for, there are no waivers for the 95% participation rate, which we're required by the state to have, for them to count Georgia milestones towards accountability. Then, like I said, you could see where last year we were at 53%, so obviously, we want to get back up. We've always been well over 98, 99% with some small exceptions here and there, but we would like to get back up to that level. The other thing that I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of is that we are required for students in 3rd through 8th grade in identified subjects to test, and in particular, in the high school where the end of course actually serves as 20% of their final grade. So while with high school, I don't think we're going to have many students decide not to come in to test because I don't know many kids that can take a 20% hit to their final grade, but we did just, again, want to make sure that everybody is aware that that is a requirement. Also, new this year, we're not going to be offering retest. We have gone now two years without retest data to make promotion retention decisions for students. And so what we've done is we've moved and shifted the time to add more instructional time into the calendar and move testing towards the end, which allows, again, teachers more time to teach, and ideally, we should see better results. More often than not, the students who retest were students that were sort of marginal anyways, they're right on the end. We don't, we don't have a lot of time to try to do a lot of remediation before we sit down to do a retest, so it's really kind of a, it just put additional pressure on the schools. We would rather see that time in the classroom. So, at this point, we have been meeting with our district assessment team, which is comprised of my department, folks from the Division of Information Services, because again, everything's 100% online now. And what we've been doing is just reading the infrastructure, making sure that Chromebooks are accounted for, taken care of, that we have sufficient hardware, and that the network infrastructure is ready. And we've also been sharing timelines, checklists, things like that with our test coordinators, again, trying to get them geared back up to handling a full testing load for all the students. And then, we've also worked on some standardized communications with this being, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're almost done here. But we, we've got those checklists and things ready and common communications, which, again, this is sort of the start of that push to make sure that everybody is aware that testing is back on, that it's required, and that we are expecting to hit that 95% participation rate. Next slide, please. So, what I have for you here is testing schedule. As you can see, we're, we're a bit later. We usually test right after spring break, and that is the first week in April, and so we are actually towards the end of the school year there. We have enough time built in to make sure that we can get testing done in an efficient manner. We have actually stacked everything on together, again, with the thought that let's try to get this thing done and not spend all these weeks of having schools locked down in quote "testing mode." So both of those, end of grade and end of course assessments, are all happening at the same time. We're working towards a unified schedule so that, again, we can be more efficient and just get it done after we've had a maximum amount of time of instruction. And lastly, we do have the Georgia Alternative Assessment, which has started now, and that ends just prior to us going into Georgia Milestones. And those are for our students who are in functional curriculum classes, who are not expected to take the standard Georgia Milestones test. And I am ready for questions, if anyone has any questions about that. Yes, ma'am.
I have one. Did we do, understand what you said about delaying testing for perhaps give you more instruction? So when you made the decision, you and Dr. Lewis or even Mrs. Seifert from the academic department, did you use, did you review any data on retesting? Did you go back and see the impact over several years if retesting made an impact on our testing?
So, a couple things. We did look at that. We've actually looked at that historically because we're, again, we're, the other thing about retesting is we only get to retest a small subset of students.
Right.
And it's only for certain subjects. So it's a very small group that tests. Some of those students do, in turn, pass the second time. More often than not, though, those are students that we see are sort of right on that line, really sometimes even within the margin of error, meaning, you know, they say this plus or minus, this would be the possible score for that student on any given day. So we did look at that data, and, and it was a cabinet, cabinet was involved in that as well, just looking at it to make a determination of what would be the most efficient use of the time and the most effective use of the time. We have students that, and, and, you know, from your teaching, when you, when you have a student going into testing, we often know who those students that are at risk already are. You know, and so I don't have to wait for a roster of, you know, they call it the PL1, the Performance Level 1 roster. I don't have to wait for that roster to know the students that we should be working with. We're working with them already. So, so, I mean, I think the retest, while it may give them another opportunity, as far as a data point for us, we have all that.
My question was, did you review the data to see if it impacted the test? Did the, did the testing improve when the testing was redone? When students had the opportunity to retake, did, did, did testing improve? That was the question, what I asked. If you reviewed the data?
We did.
And then I wanted historically to look at it for maybe more than one year to see if retesting had an impact on test scores.
So, the Georgia Milestones only gets reported the one time, which is that first time that we take it. Yes, there are a small subset of students that take it, retest, and show improvement. Those retests are not being counted or given any consideration towards school performance.
Okay, so at one time, like I remember, at one time, we retested in the summer, and then we pushed it back into the spring, and then there was a second review in the summer, summer of testing. So that's And then there was a second review in the somber, summer of testing, so that's not done now. In the summer time, tests are not updated to include those.
So, yes, ma'am, summer testing still happens. It happens for high school students to allow them the opportunity to do some credit recovery and some grade recovery, and allows them the opportunity to retest. For students in third through eighth grade, we do not do summer testing.
Are the, so, so that means are the end of course retests given for high school students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because it said, okay, so it's no retesting in grade three too late, and there is no way, and those test scores, if they were given, if they were retested, because I know a lot of them, at one time we retested in the summer, pushed back in the spring, and those other, and those retested scores were included in the Georgia, so they are not now?
No, ma'am. They're no longer counted in accountability measures. And again, the reason for the high school students is because it's 20% of their grade. So we're, we're giving them the opportunity, not so that the school or someone else gets a second look with a retest score. That, that really is for the benefit of the student at that level.
Very good. Are there any more questions? Mrs. Chambers, I see your light is on.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Just a couple of questions. My question is about really state requirements. Just for clarity's sake, the 20% of the students' final grade, is that a state requirement?
Yes, ma'am. It's a state board policy. Yes, ma'am.
So if we're not retesting and a student fails that end of course test, does that mean they will not graduate? Nine times out of 10, because if they fail 20%, unless they have a A, possibly a strong B, they're gonna fail.
Yeah, there's not many that can absorb that. So it could. I'm not going to say it won't. It could. The tests that are required now, though, generally, most seniors won't be testing. And the other thing that we've kind of shared with the schools is we have mid-month opportunities all throughout the year. If a student is going back, say, to get an algebra credit, an earlier credit that they might not have gotten, they have the opportunity to do the, the credit recovery and test during the school year so that it doesn't put them at risk. So that was another reason why we moved it back, because before we used to have to sit and wait for the econ scores to come back, and we're just, you know, sitting there, you know, biting our nails, hoping we can get them in time for graduation. That's, that's not one of the required tests anymore, and, and honestly, we still have that opportunity for them to graduate during the summer. Should we have a senior who has to go back and pick up a class, there's still an opportunity that they will graduate on time, not necessarily with their class when they walk in the spring, but they still have that opportunity in the summer. But really, the, the, the schools are keeping an eye on who those kids are to go ahead and get them in the credit recovery, go ahead and get them set up to take the test so that they're not up against the clock at the end there.
Absolutely. That was my concern. So I'm glad to hear that most of these students will not be waiting until their senior year and then depending on that one score in order to graduate.
And even if they were, it, they, they have an, they have multiple opportunities during the year to get caught up, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. And what about the requirements for third and fifth grade? Have, have those requirements changed as far as they have to pass?
We still, we have the state waiver, and, and so that allows us to look at, and again, we really largely had to make promotion retention decisions for students without a lot of that data. Because even last year, we were sort of, you know, warned against trying to make major decisions with that data. It just really was, I think I use the analogy, you know, if we tested half the room and said that's how everybody did, that's kind of what we were looking at. So at the student level, you know, we already had a lot of data points, because, like I said, those, those kids are already on our radar. We know who those kids are. And, and sometimes even if a kid passes, you may not still feel comfortable saying, okay, they're ready to go on.
That's right. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you so much for that clarity. That makes sense and sounds good.
Thank you.
I want to add some clarity too for what Mrs. Our Chambers asked. Now, the, 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 um, the subjects that the, the state tests are usually taken in the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. So that would allow for plenty of opportunity for retesting and for recovery of that, uh, that grade. So they will have opportunity to do that. And also, is this still in effect, Dr. Lewis and Mrs. Seifert? When a kid is, a couple of years ago, a few years back, the state passed the law that says if a kid is a couple of points away from passing a, a, a grade, the teacher can allow a student to make up those couple of points if she wanted to by giving extra work. Is that still in effect? Yeah, at the teacher discretion. If, I said, if the teacher, is that still in effect? So I was just, Ms. Chambers, they have that opportunity too. That's what I was saying. Okay. Are there any more questions? Thank you, Mrs. Green. That's the end of the Education Committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Next is our Policy Committee. Five point zero one is the 2022 exemplary board status with Georgia School Board Association. And as always, we pursue this exemplary status, and we, you know, commit to the work that is required to meet the qualification. And some of those requirements and classifications are listed, but, but as you are well aware, we have our whole board training, which is coming up this year, next month, April 14th. April 14th is our whole board training. Accreditation, our board member ethics status, our fiscal responsibility during the superintendent evaluation, and our strategic planning requirements. And the Georgia Vision Project Assessment, we do, we're going to revisit all of these things to make sure that we are in compliance and eligible to apply for exemplary board status again this year. Do we have any questions about five point oh one? Five point zero two. Also, um... For Georgia School Board Association, we always have delegate appointments. And I just assumed that Ms. Buckner and Ms. Chambers would continue to serve in that capacity, Ms. Buckner as the delegate and Ms. Chambers as the alternate. Are we all, are y'all still good? Put you on the spot. So we would vote on that as well next week. Any questions, anybody? No? All right. Next up is the Discipline Committee, Dr. Sly. All right, and there are no items submitted this month, Dr. Sly. We'll move on to Property Committee with Ms. Chambers. Okay. Fix it back.
Just waiting on the mic. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Seven point zero one is the Museum Report. Board members, it is attached. It has a, a list of activities that occurred at the museum in February. Also, for the month of March, we will host a Youth Art Month reception for the Muskogee County School District Elementary students on March the 17th. So mark your calendars. We will host a public program with several people in recognition of the Bradley Olmstead Garden at the museum. So be on the lookout for that. Any questions about the Museum Report? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to not, um, seven point zero two, which is the Library Report for the month of March. The Columbus Children's Book Festival is back, so on Saturday, May the 14th, at the Columbus Public Library, we'll have award-winning illustrators and authors there. Each of these internationally famous children celebrities will visit the Muskogee County School District Schools on the 13th, giving the children the opportunity to meet this world-class talent. For more information, you can visit the website for the library, and then there's a list of heartwarming stories about the library. Board members, do we have any questions or anyone want to add anything to the library or the Museum Report? Okay, hearing none. That concludes the Property Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Dr. Lewis, did you have something?
No.
All right, Ms. Jackson. Well, up next is our Personnel Committee with Ms. Jackson.
Eight point zero one is Proposed Pilot Hard-to-Fill School Initiative. There is
Yes, Ms. Ms. Jackson, if I may, I'll just go ahead and take it from here. Most of you are well aware of the nationwide shortages in teachers and support staff. This is not just related to Muskogee County or the state of Georgia. It's throughout the entire country. In response to that, we presented several items to you, which are enumerated eight point oh one, eight point oh two, eight point oh three, eight point oh four, at our February 19th Saturday Retreat that we held. These are not new items to you all, but just to recap a little bit about what we're looking at, and these are all various initiatives to try and address recruitment and retention efforts for current staff and recruitment for potential new staff. And if you'll look at the first one, this is in response to national and statewide employee shortages. We are asking that you consider a proposed pilot program to encourage retention and recruitment of employees for those hard-to-fill schools. These are specifically schools that you all denoted to us previously as a concern, and we have data that supports the need for doing something to help and assist with those particular schools and filling their vacancies. Those schools that are identified for the pilot locations are Baker Middle, Eddie Middle, and Rothschild Middle Schools. The funds for this program and all of our recruitment and retention is based on the American federal, I'm sorry, the, the Federal American Rescue Plan. Once the program has been implemented, the administration will collect data from the pilot program to determine effectiveness and efficiency. The data will be determined to use for future recruitment and retention purposes and reduce vacancies at our hard-to-fill schools. And you have that listed there. Again, the, the funding source is from the Federal American Rescue Funds. No, you're not. We'll have them available on the website, yes. Well, it's...
I said, I thought we were publicly going to cover the information tonight. Yeah, we've been told about it with the public and the staff and everybody else. They didn't really watch.
Basically, this is the proposal. I mean, it's, we can, other than being a PowerPoint, it would be the same information.
But you didn't read the amount or anything. I mean, I'd like all that on public record.
Uh, sure. So we're looking at, in the 21, 22 school year, benefit-eligible certified personnel would receive $1,000. There are 164 personnel included in that at $164,000. Non-benefit-eligible employees, oh, shoot, just pulled off. $500 for non-benefit-eligible employees. There are six of those at $3,000. That's year one. Year two, which would be 22, 23 school year, benefit-eligible certified personnel would be $3,000 at 164 personnel. That coming to a total of 492,000. And then for non-benefit personnel in year two, 1,500, six of those at 9,000. And then in 23, 24, 4,000. So you have 1,000, 3,000, and 4,000 dollar increments. $4,000 for the same 164 staff members at a cost of $656,000. Non-benefit-eligible, $2,000, six at $12,000. And the total amount comes to, uh, let's see. Well, there's the presentation if you want to.
One hundred, 1,336,000.
Right. So we could go, the, the presentation is there if you'd like for us to go through that in, in detail. That's fine. All right. So go ahead, please. Just go ahead and take them through that since it's, if you'd like to see.
I don't know if it, if possible, would you all want me to present it at Monday's meeting? Would you all want, do you want me to present it right now? I, I, okay.
Just take it up and plug it in there. We can do that. Eight point zero one.
Because then we kind of went through all of them.
And if you will, if you could give us a little background. Give us a little background on the purpose and what we're doing. And Dr. Lewis, you can do it if you want to.
Well, I, I did give a little bit of background about the shortages we have throughout the state and nation, as well as Muskogee County, and we're looking at, for teachers and support staff. And this was one of several initiatives we are putting together to help retain and attract talent for our schools. This is a pilot program based on the input from the board of identifying the schools that are particularly hard to fill, and these schools were specifically addressed by the board previously as schools to look at.
Okay, good. You did say they were hard to field. That's what...
I'm sorry.
The, the planning retreat where we went into this fairly in-depth, was that recorded?
It was not recorded.
It was not recorded. Thank you.
And we will put these on our website, of course.
Okay, so I'm probably going to...
And while you're there, so you have eight point zero one, eight point zero two, the proposed stipend for exiting state identification school. Eight point zero three is the relocation stipend, and eight point zero four is the tuition assistance program, and eight point zero five is the recruitment bonus. So you...
And that's the one I will do directly.
You're gonna do that one? Do you have all of those?
I have all of them with the exception of one that I think Mr. Bell could come and talk a little bit on. Is that okay? I don't know what we titled it. Sorry, give me one sec.
And whatever you don't have, if you want to finish it up next Monday, since we, since you weren't, since you're on the spot, that's perfectly fine.
The presentation Mr. Bell will speak on is the Proposed Stipend for Exiting State Identifica, Identification Schools. So that's the only one I don't have in this presentation.
That's fine. Thank you.
I don't think it's on. Okay, thank you.
They're bringing it back.
Okay, so thank you, board, and thank you, everyone. We have been listening to the feedback from our stakeholders and also listening to our hiring managers within the schools and in other divisions, and collected a couple of data points from them regarding what their needs are within their spaces to fill the vacancies. So I'm gonna go probably a little bit out of order from how it is in board docs, and we're gonna start with tuition assistance program. We are proposing a tuition assistance program that would be serving all of our employees that are in benefits-eligible positions. And we are going to be partnering with a third-party vendor, if approved, that will manage the collection of documentation on our behalf, which would include being accepted into a accredited university or college. And this would also provide employees the opportunity to be able to apply for certifications and licenses. So this could cover both of our school-based positions and our district support and admin positions. We're proposing a plan that will cover this upcoming school year and the following school year. So that, in total, for school year 22, 23, the platform plus the implementation costs $20,000, and we're also using ESSER funds to put $100,000 as an aside to be able to provide the employees the opportunity to gain some, to use the tuition assistance program. We're proposing that also for school year 20, 23, 24, with the exception that the platform will only cost $15,000 because there's a $5,000 implementation that only applied for school year 22, 23. So the total cost that will be coming out of ESSER funds would be $235,000. And some of the questions that came about were, well, how would that sustain after the ESSER funds ends? So the sustainability plan is that we're going to be partnering with the, with the federal, our, our federal program, and also partnering with community partners to apply for grants. We already have one, actually, we actually, we have two that we're considering applying for that would allow for us to apply for a grant that would cover the entire cost and possibly also help us increase the amount that we could use towards this employees utilizing for educational needs. and possibly also help us increase the amount that we could use towards the employees utilizing for educational needs. So as I mentioned, the proposal includes for this, applying for all of our benefits-eligible employees, whether that is our educators or our employees in operations and facilities or our employees that are serving as our administrative personnel. It would cover all degrees and certification types. So it would cover the, the ability to get your GED or a Institute of Higher Education degree in addition to certification and licenses, which sometimes have to be renewed. So we wanted to provide or lighten the load for our employees that need to do that, which would also help with retention. The application through the platform will be available on our website, and we're gonna be partnering with the Division of Information Services and also with our Division of Finance to ensure that the financing is tracked appropriately for us to submit to the ESSER funds for the auditing and also just to make it easily accessible. We do recognize that there might be a digital divide that some employees may not be able to gain access to the website, but there is a phone number that the, that their party vendor provides that walks them through the process where they won't have to apply, and they also do it in several different languages. They gave us the list of all the languages, but I, I don't know if we would need all of them, but I'm glad that that's a service. At this, at this time, the maximum proposed, the maximum amount that we're proposing is three thousand dollars because we're trying to see if there's an interest with the employee population. We anticipate that the first year may not gain a lot of traction because it's the first year, but we're gonna see a significant increase in the second year after marketing and using it as a recruitment tool. So we hope to be able to do that as we continue to expand our recruitment activities through Georgia and other states. So that is one of the proposals. Absolutely.
And as part of that, they signed some kind of agreement that they will stay with the district for a certain amount of time.
Absolutely. We will be partnering with legal, but they also have a letter that they use as a standard practice, and we'll share that document to make sure that it aligns with our needs. So it would be with a dedication of time and service.
Ms. Chambers, do you have a question?
Yes, I have just a clarification question. So a teacher or anyone, any employee that's eligible can go back to school. And are they applying for this money upfront, or is it a reimbursement-type program? That's my first question. And then the second one, I know you said you were gonna put it on the website and also have a phone number, but can we send it out like a mass email via Peachtree or something like that? So those are my two questions.
Absolutely. So we are, the recommendation right now is for it to be a scholarship program. So they would get the funding after they confirm that they've been accepted into a program. And in some cases, they may have already received an invoice or paid some type of fee. So that would be honored through the process depending on an effective date. So we're working through those logistics as well. And just to give us an example, we have a lot of paraprofessionals that may be seeking to get their degree but have been in flux because of everything going on. So we were just hoping to create that pathway for them to continue and also just to do a return on investment for them and for our district. The other thought process regarding the website, that won't be the only method that we use to share it. We're gonna be sharing it at job fairs, we're gonna be sharing it on the website, we're gonna be doing information sessions, and we could definitely share it through any other platforms that we use at the district. Absolutely, I hope so too, thank you.
Wait, she's trying to catch up with y'all.
Try, leave your mic on if you think you're gonna have a follow-up, because I might look away.
My follow-up is just ditto to what Mrs. Davis-Chamber said. This is awesome, all these things to recruit, this is what we need. We went in and pretty much did what we were talking about. We have to retain and we have to recruit, we have to recruit, and this is a very good idea.
Absolutely, thank you so much. With that, just as a over, as an overview, again, it would be for our benefits-eligible positions, but we're also gonna be hoping to be able to increase our Institute of Higher Education partnerships to continue to expand, driving some pathways for education, but also other fields like social work, counseling, nursing, and things like that. And hopefully being able to establish our own Grow Your Own program with, in partnership with CTAE, and also establishing internship, or rather, we have internships at the district, but streamlining them in order for us to be able to measure and create different partnerships across the district, but across Institutes of Higher Education that are looking for partnerships as well because they're experiencing a similar exodus in education through P through twenty. So we're hoping that that would assist all of us in being able to reduce the great resignation gap. So another recruitment stipend, or recruitment initiative that we're proposing is a relocation stipend for teacher positions. This relocation stipend will assist our principals and their administration teams to recruit employees that may live a distance from where we are located and hopefully entice them to want to transition over to us. The Division of Finance and HR are looking into ways that if this could be implemented as either an advanced allowance or as a part of their first paycheck, depending on what we're able to do with our system, but we're very hopeful. We are also gonna make sure that we align with any IRS compliance items. But the proposal includes that a principal would be able to make a recommendation for a Level One relocation stipend for a teacher position that is over ninety to one hundred and ninety-nine miles. And they would be able to, they would be entitled to two thousand dollars. And for Level Two is anybody two hundred miles and above that are away from the McPeck address, which is twenty-nine sixty Macon Road. So the hope or the thought process in that is also to remain competitive with our metro Atlanta location where we are able to entice those teachers to come on over to Muskogee in order for them to serve here, which will help us with our UGA recruits and also the Georgia State recruits. So we're hoping that that would be something that would help the teachers and it will have a high focus on our sped and our core positions, but it'd be open to all of the teacher vacancies across the district. We are also proposing a referral stipend, and we already have a referral stipend in place for our bus drivers. But what we are proposing in this instance is for a district-wide referral stipends in place. So if any employee in the district, inclusive of leadership, makes a referral for a person who is hired and passes the eligibility of ninety days, they would, that doesn't work in their department if they're a leader, they would be eligible for a five hundred dollar referral bonus. And that would be what we're aligning in addition to what the bus driver transportation referral currently has in place. So with, with that said, we're hoping that our employees will be able to make referrals for us and that would give us some more traction and help, help us help each other.
And, and the goal there is simply this. HR may have three, four, or five people working on recruitment. Hopefully, this will give us potentially five thousand recruiters, is the idea. And they can get up to, and it can be more than one. If they can get two or three other people, then they could get up to fifteen hundred dollars, or more, depending on how many they get. Again, they have to be able to meet their hiring requirements for their specific job and then stay on the job for, I think we said ninety days, it was something we had put on there. So again, this expands our reach and our efforts in recruitment to all five thousand employees. So everyone's out there promoting our district, trying to get their team together.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. So sometime in the fall, the Board had requested for us to have a focus on our hard-to-fill schools or the schools that have like a high turnover. And we decided to try to think of ways to provide those school support for sure, as well as the overall district. So we are proposing a hard-to-fill schools pilot initiative that's going to focus on three schools at this time in order for us to pull data to create a full program that will allow for incentivized performance management and also just to secure a couple of employees to come on over. So it has, it's a twofold. I'm gonna go over the first part of this proposal, and it's gonna cover the recruitment and retention stipend, and then we're gonna go over the performance expectation stipend of this proposal. So as mentioned, the pilot is going to serve Baker Middle School, Eddie Middle School, and Rothschild Leadership Academy. And the funding for this program is gonna come through our ESSER funds. And the stakeholders, as mentioned, the stakeholders were consulted to collect some of this data in addition to the data regarding the other recruitment and retention initiatives. So for the recruitment and retention stipend for this current school year, any employee who signs their contract or returns to the school that they're currently assigned to that's in the pilot, which is Eddie, Baker, or Rothschild, would be eligible for a stipend. The eligible, benefits-eligible employees, my apologies, are eligible for one thousand dollars, and non-benefits-eligible would be able to receive five hundred. So to provide a little more clarity on that, we wanted to be able to focus on our overall employee population, but also the subs. Because the substitutes that we need to come and serve also needs to be incentivized in some capacity to come and do so. So those are technically the group that falls in, non-benefits-eligible. There would be no third-party vendors that are eligible for this. So let's say that a school has proximity, as the teacher in proximity on the screen, that obviously that third-party vendor won't be eligible, but the instructional assistant in the classroom would be eligible. Ms. McCray?
On the subs part, kinda explain to me how many times they have to sub or how they qualify for the stipend.
Absolutely, thank you. So we are requesting for subs to meet ninety, a ninety-day within a school year, which is that what we had done for the creating we stipend this past year that was successful. So we're gonna use the similar language. For school year twenty-two, twenty-three, now this is gonna be for our current employees and also for new hires. So any new hires that are onboarded at these specific schools, they will be eligible for fifteen hundred or for seven hundred and fifty dollars. As a point of clarity, the amounts are, are gonna be received in two parts. So the fifteen hundred for a benefits-eligible employee, they're gonna receive half of the fifteen hundred, so seven fifty, in December and the other half in June. So they're not gonna get fifteen hundred in December and fifteen hundred in June, just as a point of clarity. That's the way we laid out the plan. For school year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-two, twenty-four, the current employees and any new hires that are going into, that's into one of the pilot schools will be eligible for two thousand dollars. And also, the non-benefits-eligible would be able to receive one thousand dollars. So just as a point of reference, let's say that we have an employee who is benefits-eligible and has been, came back for, signed their contract to come back for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, stays for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, they're eligible for about eight thousand dollars. If for some reason that employee transitions out of one of the schools that are not in this pilot or leaves the school that they are currently assigned to, they may not be eligible for that full amount. It really depends on retain, being retained into those spaces. So just wanted to make that as a point of clarity for the proposal. So up next, we have the second part of the hard-to-fill initiative, and that's the performance stipend proposal. Because the current school year is, we're almost done with it, we did not have enough time to try to have a performance component added for this year, so there will be no performance stipend for this current school year. However, we are proposing for school year twenty-two and twenty-three, that, and twenty-three and twenty-four, that employees be eligible for a performance stipend that will be measured by their evaluation type. So in, as a part of their evaluation program with their supervisor, they're going to put some goals that they're, some measurable goals that will be able to confirm that they've been either surpassing or superseded, I'm sorry, either met or superseded the performance goal that was agreed to by them and their supervisor. There will be some guidance provided regarding if it's gonna apply for their school improvement plan or for the district improvement plan, but the goal is for it to be measurable so it could be successful. For school year twenty-two, twenty-three, the amount that a benefits-eligible employee could qualify for is fifteen hundred, and a non-benefits-eligible employee can qualify for seven fifty. And for school year twenty-three, twenty-four, the benefits-eligible employee can qualify for two thousand, and a non-benefits-eligible employee can receive up to one thousand dollars. As mentioned, it's gonna go according to the evaluation type that you have. And as you can see, we included TEACs, LEACs, and also for the certified, classified, and the substitutes. While we definitely understand the substitutes may not receive a, an actual evaluation form, i- if this gets proposed, then we'll be working through those logistics in order to better serve this, those spaces. So as a full overview, here are the eligible stipend amounts. And as you can see, so just as a point of reference, the dark gray, those all go together for the benefits-eligible employees that total eight thousand, and the ones that are not grayed out that are in white, those total a total of four thousand. So the estimated cost for the initiative, again, would be one million, three hundred, thirty-six thousand dollars that we would be using out of the ESSER funds. I guess I could talk a little bit on it, Matt, or do you wanna come in? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I have a couple of questions before we move past that. And one, I learned something I didn't learn in the retreat, I didn't fully understand the two parts of that, so thank you. Would you kinda better explain the criteria for picking these three schools? And then also, if it's a pilot for three, this three years, then it means only these three schools for three years. We won't look at expanding it until after school year twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-two, twenty-four?
So throughout the entire pilot phase, we're gonna be meeting with all of the employees and focus groups to continue to collect data. The thought process is to be able to create a merit-based program in order for us to implement it holistically across the district for all positions. There isn't a merit-based program in the state of Georgia right now that includes all of the employees. So we wanted to be able to have a large enough group where we're able to build it well and make sure that we have stakeholder buy-in and stakeholder input. As far as how the schools were selected, we identified schools that were identified by the state as CSI, TSI, but also we were, we were charged by the Board to focus on, on these schools. So we could provide more information regarding their vacancy rates. But at this juncture, these are the schools with the highest vacancy rates, and we wanted to be able to start with middle schools in order to be able to figure the best routes from elementary to middle and from middle to high school. So we thought that this would be a good, a good way to go that way, in that route.
I, I will say that if we get good data next year, we'd certainly look at expanding the pilot to include more schools, certainly, because that's the ultimate goal. We don't wanna wait three years if it's proved to be successful. We certainly would wanna expand the pilot as soon as possible.
But isn't that traditional, though, for, in order to make a good, to analyze a pilot? Isn't it traditionally done in like three years so you can collect data, sufficient data to do a good pilot? Now, I'm just saying. I know you said you can do it after one year, but I'm just saying. Don't, when people do a pilot, don't they usually do three years? That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely. We would, we would like to be able to collect enough data to support a logic regarding, especially regarding a merit-based program. There were districts within the state and other states that rolled out a merit-based program that was unsuccessful, perhaps due to not including stakeholder input. And we wanted to be able to, to honor that and provide transparency for how it's going. So in, in the event, I do think we're gonna have some success in the first year, but I would like to be able to measure the trends if they're fluctuating or increasing.
So to be clear, when we possibly expand it, could it be expanded to schools that are merit-based but yet do not have vacancies, or is this always gonna be tied to vacancies?
As, as far as, I believe, as far as for the performance-driven one, I, we would like it to be district-wide, but we did wanna start with supporting the hard-to-fill schools as the, that was the charge that we were given by the Board. I'm sorry.
Have we done any analysis? You know, I know we have, we have vacancies probably all over, but I, do we have a significant problem with merit-based schools? Because generally, that's where a lot of teachers wanna go, and they, they will go to the harder field schools and stay there. And I like the idea that we're staying. Don't they have to stay like three years at these schools? And then they transfer it to other schools. So have we done any data about merit-based schools in terms of vacancies? And like I said, probably all of them have vacancies, if they're hard-to-fill vacancies.
We could definitely look into pulling that data. Right now, the district is not a merit-based program school, but we are able, I wanted to be able for Cabinet and other hiring managers to be able to see how that could be successful, especially if you're providing measurable goals. So I would, I would, if you, I could definitely pull that.
And can this, can this board decide on what it wants in terms of that? Because if somebody wants the stipend, then they should go to these schools and work. I'm just saying, the board can decide on what they want to target in their pilot program or in the program that goes on further after this point. And I think that should be a board discussion because when we have schools that are hard to fill, we should continually be working toward toward those schools. When we don't have a problem, we don't need to just fund something when we don't have a problem just because other people are getting the stipend, a needed stipend, to fill these vacancies. So I think we have, we should, before we do that, and you're continuing to take data, but this board should have a discussion on what they, what it wants.
Absolutely, just and just to add to that, we are going to be aligning this with school improvement plans and the district improvement plans for measurable goals because those are our our priorities overall. So the that would be the hope, definitely, to continue to have them focus on those things where they're measurable and also aligned with the state's requirements.
I think Ms. Buckner actually made my point, but I'll just reiterate the fact that this is a proposed pilot for hard-to-fill schools. Let's put a period after that and just, that's it. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I was going to wait to the end, but I better go ahead and ask my question or or really, this is just a comment, not a question. So I think this is an excellent program for hard-to-fill schools. I think it's great to give the one-time stipend of fifteen hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. But I do just want to put a plug into listening ears, Dr. Lewis, and to other people that I I believe that these schools, hard-to-fill schools, need additional resources and additional manpower. And so if there are funds available through the ESER funds, perhaps we can bring in additional personnel to lower the student-teacher ratio. And then also to perhaps have resource teachers in reading and math so that they can work with those students in small groups that are behind one, two, and three grade levels. So that's just a please consider.
To your point, we actually have already done that. We have allocated as part of our ESER funds that you all have discussed and we approved the plan to go forward, that we actually have opportunities for schools to hire full and/or part-time people. The big problem is, we don't have enough people. That's the whole point of this, is trying to find more people.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so that's good to hear. Because I think, because I think you have to have both. You incentivize the people that are still there, but I believe they have a weight on their shoulders in some cases. And if you don't remove the weight, there's really no amount of money you could incentivize i- if we don't, you know, sort of make the conditions better for the students and for the teachers. So that was the point I was making. So kudos, great job, if you guys are already working on that, love it. The other thing, I said this at the retreat, and I'll say it again. I love the relocation package that we are reaching out to surrounding areas to bring in teachers for those vacancies. But I would love to see the business community in Columbus, Georgia get on board with this and offer some type of incentives to these teachers to travel to Columbus and to relocate here. And I think we can do that through a partnership. So those are just two little comments to consider.
Absolutely, thank you. We we have been following the retreat, looking to establish those partnerships for discounts at different spaces to live. But we're we're going to continue to do that because it's going to definitely take the whole community to partner up.
Read that between the line, okay. Thank you very much. Keep trying.
Okay, so we also, as I mentioned, this was actually a partnership proposal with Matt Bell. So we wanted to also provide a performance stipend for the TSI Promise School and CSI schools that have been identified by the state. So as you can see, these are, this is the definition of what each of those means and the schools that are identified in each category. So I'm going to go over to the next slide that talks about what they would be eligible eligible for if these schools were to come off of the this list or go improve on the list, right?
Right, yeah.
You heard Patrick Knopf's assessment proposal, his. So this May, those scores are going to be used to create a new list. So very important, it's a one-time deal. That list will be generated, published in November. And we feel like we have a really good chance for all of these schools to come off.
But it's all contingent upon, just keep in mind, this CCRPI, whatever it ends up looking like, is going to be totally different from anything we've had in the past. It's going to be based on mastery of content, nothing about growth, which is where a lot of our schools have previously earned a lot of their points. You heard Patrick, and I want to just reiterate this, the ninety-five percent participation rule is still in effect. One of the things that concerns Patrick Knopf and and our principals, all of us, is the fact that there was a perception last year that testing was optional. And it was last year for some, right? We said fifty-three percent, I think, was the number used of our kids tested. That option is no longer an option. It's mandated, it is going to be required for the kids to test. And schools that don't have that ninety-five percent participation rate will get dinged on the CCRPI. So we'll talk more about that, but I want to make sure I understand that it's a new day, a new baseline is going to be established using these scores from which future CCRPI scores will be calculated in some form or fashion, all of which is being reevaluated, reevaluated now. Not to mention, at the federal level, there are new perspectives being discussed about what should these schools, how should they be identified as far as challenge schools? One of the issues that is a problem and has been a problem, and I've said this, in fact, I just met with a couple of senators over the past couple of weeks sharing this concern. One of the frustrations that schools have, and you all have expressed, some of you have expressed the same concern, is when the state identifies these schools, these are Title I schools to begin with, and they're the the schools that are considered lower-performing Title I schools. The bottom five percent, you can be improving tremendously, but if you are moving at the same rate as somebody else, you may still be in the bottom five percent. We are advocating for a threshold. Tell us where that is and let our schools feel like they're accomplishing something. To this whole point, teachers and principals want to want to feel like the work they're doing is being valued and appreciated. And they might be making great strides. In fact, I can tell you right now, some of our most challenged schools are getting the most growth of any schools in our district. But if unless they're getting exceedingly high measures of growth, it's going to be challenging for them to get out of that five percent. So that's why a threshold, in my view, is important. So we can say, once you reach that, you come off whatever list or designation there is. Anyway, that's a philosophical discussion, but the point being is that we've got to continue to work on making sure our kids are obviously mastering the content, but also getting credit for growth going forward and making sure that they are all participating in the test, which in the past couple of years has been, like I said, it's been optional. And even the twenty percent on a final grade for seniors, we're trying to make sure all of our, all of our high school students understand that twenty percent is back in place. Last year was down to like point one something percent of the final. And so we wanted to dispel that myth, and we want everybody in the public to understand that the ninety-five percent participation is still in effect this year, goes back to an effect, as well as the twenty percent of the final grade. So these are all really important factors for the public to know, all the more reason why we need to make sure kids are in school every day to the extent possible. I think I hear amen or near here or something back there in the assessment corner.
Just, and I think this is more for Mr. Bell, for clarification on this one. She said the new list would be out in November. Are these stipends really more for something that would be paid a year out? What are we comparing to determine the stipend?
This would be payable for any employee who returns next year that was on staff this year in December.
If their school moves up?
Yes.
If they come off the list.
Based on that list that comes out, if they're off the list come November.
I thought it was growth and off the list.
Off the list, and if they move from, like, for example, if they move from CSI to Promise or TSI, yeah. Some other designation that's less punitive like this.
Yeah, we have three tiers. CSI is tier three. If they move down a tier, that's improvement, and they would be eligible for the for the stipend.
That's, I was just, and so, and this is really something, you said December, end of, end of twenty-two, yeah. So next school year.
We're talking about this May, these test.
These results for next year's list in November.
But we won't know until, right. Right. And at some point, if this is approved, y'all will come back and present to us who all did it and what they received.
Absolutely.
Great.
And again, we may not know because the criteria is all going to change with the new assessment's going to be. So we won't know how schools are going to perform. We could have less, we could have more. I mean, theoretically, we just don't know, it could be anything between here and here. We just don't know until we get all the.
I was just trying to figure out the timeline.
Yeah.
Because we were talking about it now, I was thinking it was something being done the end of this school year.
It could be a really good Christmas for all the people who do all this stuff.
That would be great, that would be great news. Thank you.
And I'd like to add, it includes all employees, from school nutrition, custodial, to the classroom, to the administration.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
It's a team effort, that's right.
Absolutely, there's just one more slide to show you all, and which is talking about how the funding would be covered.
Okay.
And this is the breakdown for the TSI Promise School and CSI. So the slash is benefits eligible is the first number and the non-benefits eligible is the second number. So for certified staff in a TSI school, they'd be eligible for six hundred. And then the non-benefits eligible will be able to get three hundred, and so on and so forth. As a, I just wanted to throw a shameless plug, sorry. We have the virtual teachers fair coming up on March twenty-sixth. And we're also discussing doing an in-person teachers recruitment fair. But we are also going to have a district support and admin fair in April, and more details will be coming up on that.
But again, there's nothing better than personal word of mouth. So that's a reason why we got five thousand recruiters out there if this gets approved.
Is there any more questions?
Outstanding, outstanding, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, on this side.
I would like to thank.
That's always the the indication of a shining star when you can, you can roll like that on the fly.
But I would like to thank all of our staff because a lot of people have had, our cabinet has been debating this and discussing this and talking. Because when you start getting into little details, it can get very. Well, HR was involved, we had all of our cabinet involved. Mr. Bell took the lead on this most recent one with the CSI, TSI, Ms. Castillo and her team. All the HR staff have been working on some of the relocation, the whole, basically doing all the research on this and bringing this and trying to make, as you said, a very comprehensive plan for not only attracting talent but keeping them, and especially where we need them most.
I agree, I think it's important stuff. Sorry, that's just why I wanted to, I know it took a little more time, but I wanted to make sure all our staff and the public that watch these meetings had a chance to hear it in depth. Thank you.
It was, it was time well spent. And again, on behalf of the board, thank you all for all the work that you do. And I know you were mentioning the partners embedded into your presentation. But I think the biggest part that's most exciting is everyone getting a referral fee. So all of us will have some skin in the game. Why should say us? Because we wouldn't get the.
We're not.
So that the the MCSD employees will all have some skin in the game. So that's exciting, and so we're looking forward to turning the corner. Ms. Jackson, you have a couple more.
Oh, eight, eight point zero six is pending director, you say something, Ms. Buckner?
And I know everybody said it, but I'm still going to say it myself, that I thought this was very well thought out. That's, that's why I was asking you who all was involved. It was, this is very comprehensive, and it was well, very well thought out.
Yep. Eight point zero six, pending director of transportation.
Just all three of these next positions, the director of transportation, the principal at Dorothy Heights Elementary, and the principal of double trips are all pending, just final notifications. We'll bring that information to you. I'll probably be sending it to you by way of email the next day and then presenting those for your consideration. I did talk with Ms. Green previously and Ms. McCray just to get approval to go ahead and put these on here. But we're just finishing up notifications because we want to do things in the right order.
All right, sounds good. Eight point zero nine is the personnel, there's some attachments there, any questions? Here and on, back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Cantrell, Construction Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to nine point oh one, resolution construction projects. The blow, the blow projects have been completed and the contractors have been fully compensated according to the construction contracts. This is a request of the Board of Education to approve completion of construction as required by the Georgia Department of Education. At Matthews Elementary School was cooler freezer. At Kendrick High School, the HVAC. And at Hannon Elementary School, the HVAC. Any questions on that? If not, we move to the next one, nine point oh two, resolution for Winton Capital Outlay Project. Muskogee County School District Construction Department recommends a resolution to withdraw the Winton Arts Academy roof from the approval of the FY eighteen COP entitlement application with the Georgia Department of Education. Materials delays will prevent meeting the proper deadlines associated with this application. The MCSD Construction Department will apply during the FY twenty-four application window, which opens the during the summer of two thousand twenty-two. Any questions? If not, we move to the final, nine point oh three, construction status report. We have Mr. Anderson going to give a presentation on the projects going on now in Columbus.
Thank you so very much. So you have the report in front of you, we have a few slides we want to show you. We're excited about the progress we've been able to make on our construction. Even in the midst of a pandemic and inflation, we are still making progress and really proud of that. We've completed some projects recently.
There it is, it's just a little slow. It's a Monday.
So we completed the HVAC. Thank you. We completed the HVAC renovations at Hannon, Kendrick. We've completed some renovations at Veterans Memorial, our security vestibule, which we'll be continuing to do those projects throughout the district as well as updating their media center. Some products that we're actively working on, that you've seen some in the report. We have the weight room expansion at Carver, as well as Columbus. We're continuing to do various renovations at Jordan. Here you see the demolition of the media center as well as the completion of the elevator shaft. You've seen several pictures of that in progress.
That's the demolition of the library?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Media center.
Their media center, yes.
Clarify that.
And the weight room expansion at Northern, Northside. We're continuing to work on the weight room expansion, the bandroom expansion at Veterans. That project is moving along nicely, and they're ready to move in really soon. We're excited about that. And of course, our big project, the stadium. If you've driven by recently, you'll see that it looks very different. We are excited. As you know, with construction, when the cranes are on site, that is a significant status in the project. When the cranes leave site, that is a significant status in the project. So you'll see now that the cranes are no longer there. We are really excited about the progress we're making there. And of course, the full drone video is available there if you'd like to follow that. And this presentation, as well as the full report with all the details, is available online. So you can follow that as well as the drone video if you'd like. Some additional projects we're continuing to work on. As always, we are excited and thankful for your support. We appreciate you. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Unless any questions, that's all for the construction report, Madam Chair.
I have, I have, do we know?
We do have a question.
I have a question, but I, I didn't, it was not there. I was going to ask a question about Dos, the, the combining of Dawson Elementary and St. Mary's. What's our status on that, or how are we coming?
We are working on through some challenges we have with that, and we'll be talking with you about that, but that's something, it's still on progress, but we've got some challenges with the site and things like that we're looking at right now.
And I also want to say, I'm glad we got that HVAC at Kendrick, a lot of parents have called me about that, and Dr. James has always talked about this staff, they always came, we just had the problems, and now we're fixing it. We have stuff that could not be helped, and he always said that, y'all were always coming out there. Of course, I relate that to the parents, you know, so.
And Board, you'll be getting an invitation to go visit the stadium and see progress update, I think it's like April fourteenth, I'll send that date for you, so if you'd like to come out and take a look at it.
That's great.
Nice.
He's so right about that, people just be calling me telling me about that, they just get excited, you're right about that. People just call and talk about, oh, they're doing this, they're doing that.
Any more questions?
Finance Committee.
You know, I turned your mic on because I thought you had a question, Ms. Chambers, that you have a question before we go. Because Kathy will run us.
I will go now. My, my mic was on. I mean, if you had a question, I just, nobody was saying anything, so I thought maybe you were waiting on me. Go ahead.
I'll make it brief. The drone video, I think it's important because the citizens had to approve the e-splash, I think it's important that they are able to see the progress. I know we're putting it on the website, but if we could add it maybe to social media or something like that, so that people see that we're doing what we said we were going to do with the money that they have entrusted us with, so that would be great if we could sort of share that with the general public. Okay, thank you.
Finance Committee, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A ten point zero one is an important item as we begin our budget process. Ms. Bloodworth, are you going to go over the parameters, or shall I? All right, Board members, you have in your packet the, the Governor's FY twenty twenty-three initiatives statewide, I'd like to just go over those. The first one is three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to offset austerity reduction to the QBE Quality Basic Education Program. Yay, thank you. I know, I meant that. I meant that. The next one is two hundred and eighty-seven million, adjustment to the state salary schedule for an increase of two thousand dollars, yay. Forty-three million for growth and training and experience, three point one million in projected dual enrollment, two hundred and eighty thousand for school nurses, yay. Two hundred and eighty-nine million in bonds for construction and renovation projects for local school systems, two point two million in bonds for career technical and agricultural equipment, and thirteen million to reflect an increase in the actuarial determined employer contribution to the teacher retirement system, from nineteen point eighty-one to nineteen point ninety-eight. So I think that shows, one, that our state is a little healthier than it's been in the past, and two, a commitment to public education. So that takes us to our budget parameters, and as we begin building the FY twenty twenty-three general fund budget, and looking at what the state's priorities and initiatives are, the following is for your review and consideration for our board parameters, and this is what you'll be asked to ratify next week, or, or ask any questions this evening, or before next week. These are very important items, because this will guide staff through the rest of the budget process.
And just, and just as a reminder, this was the presentation from the superintendent's retreat, and if you have any additional focuses, this is the time.
This is the time.
Because once we set the parameters next week, we will be rolling on that.
This is the time, and some of this, you know, quite frankly, rolls, it's, it's always on our parameter list because it's always of importance to us. Excuse me. So, first, continued effort to provide the programs needed as we strive to become a premier district, which includes differentiated resources for challenged schools. That's very important. Next, leverage the use of Esra funding to address ongoing learning needs and safety precautions, and you saw a little example of that this evening with the recruitment and retention initiatives, incredibly important to our district. Next, pass along any increases to the state salary schedules to certificated staff. If the state's going to give it, we're going to, we're going to pass it along, every penny of it. Next, pass along step increases within the current state of Georgia teacher salary schedule and salary scale for non-certified personnel. Increase teacher retirement system, as I mentioned in the Governor's initiatives, increase in salary of three point five percent to those positions that did not receive an increase in FY twenty, twenty twenty-two. Next, move pre-K teachers and paraprofessionals from the grant pay scale to the district pay scale, along with increasing hours for pre-K paraprofessionals. I think this country more and more realizes how absolutely critical pre-K is to our future generations, and making this investment will pay dividends for years and years to come. Next, include one point five mil transfer out for Chattahoochee Valley Regional Library System, and two hundred and fifty thousand transferred to capital projects. We, we are very proud of our regional library system. Maintain our tax mil levy at two three point three two one mils. And last but not least, continuation of zero-based budgeting model that we have implemented for at least ten years, that I can, the nine years, okay, closing in on ten. So Board members, are there any questions on any of these parameters, any additions that you would like to discuss, or any changes? I know we went through it quite a bit, and I appreciate the, the staff capturing all that information. Okay, that may, moves us to ten point zero two, Purchase Exception A and B combined. This is for bids and quotations, you have one bid before you for Incident IQ, any questions on that? Ten point zero three, Purchase Exception E, this is for also bids and quotations, you have one before you, which is Power Up EDU, Increased Threshold. Are there any questions on that item? Seeing none, that takes us to ten point zero four, Exception F, this is invite, whoa, where did you go? Invitation to Bid, and you have several before you that include VirtuCom, yay. Solution Z, K-Log, Passion, Redmond and Sons, Columbus Tape and Video, Ernie Morris, and Wade Ford purchases of, I think that was for step vans or something. All right, Mr. Cantrell?
It's good to see Columbus Tape and Video, first of all, because it says Columbus, that means there's a Columbus business that's getting this business here, and all this is mostly a lot of coming from our splosh money that our citizens voted. Go back, there it goes. On Wade Ford, I know it's probably not as much money, but I don't see the Columbus Ford dealership as far as a, a bid right there, and I know this came from, that they was able to get it from the Georgia statewide contract right there, but I still feel like the, if it's a Columbus Ford dealership, it should have a chance at a bid on this right here. And no matter if we win or lose or not, we, I don't even know who the Ford people are over here.
Do we have a Ford? Columbus Ford?
Rivertown Ford, Rivertown is who it is, but every time, I still feel like a local dealership on, on vehicles should have a chance at the bid, and it does not look like it, and I know you guys got it from the statewide contract number, and that's, that's adequate, but that is still not saying, there's a lot of Columbus, Georgia people that works at Rivertown Ford, and I, I would appreciate when you're making these bids for these vehicles, that our local people have a chance at winning the bid, no matter what. That's just my two cents worth.
Yeah, Mr. Joseph, you can speak to that.
I have a follow-up question to Mr. Cantrell's too, I'll go ahead and ask while you're coming up. On the state, what?
You will, I must have hit the wrong thing. Operator error, operator error, hit your thing, mic again, Ms. Williams.
Are our local vendors, such as Rivertown Ford or whomever, do they have the opportunity to bid for the statewide contract? So if you address those two, that item as well, Mr. Cantrell, please.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Edwin Joseph, the Director of Purchasing and Supply Management. We'll start with your question, and yes, the local vendors, any vendor, do have the opportunity to bid on state contracts. The state contract does the exact same thing that we do, which is they send out a bid packet to their vendors that are on the bidder's list, and then all those vendors do have an opportunity to go ahead and submit a bid to the state. To answer your question, sir, because of the severity of the, of the need that the district has for vehicles, we actually did reach out to Rivertown Ford and other local vendors, Chevy and Dodge, just to see what we could find out in the industry, and see if we could turn around a, a supply of cargo vans and, and step vans and, and service vans. At the time, the industry, the supply chain is destroyed, to say the least, and we are right now just trying to find some, some vans somewhere that we can go with. So we did reach out to the local vendors just to kind of see what they, what they could pull for us, and they also are running in the same hurdles that we are. You're very welcome, very welcome.
We always want our local vendors to have opportunities, whether that's through the state contracts or through local bids to have the opportunity to do so, but again, being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, we have to go where, in this case, quite frankly, trying to find a van, a utility van that can be used for our needs, is virtually impossible. In fact, I think the last I heard is, we would be on a waiting list for twenty twenty-three, is that right?
Thank, thank, thank you very much, and thank you for your vigilance to that topic. I'm sorry, did you have?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know, you want to move on, but just a second, what Mr. Cantrell said, I, I do agree too, and I know in this case we did do it, but I just would always want to know that we didn't use a non-local for a slight difference. I would like for it to be, yes, enough. So I mean, I know most of our processes look at the bottom line, which usually I'm very much in favor of, but when we are looking at local and non-local, I would like, I am okay with some, some leniency towards keeping it local.
Well, our, our policy, board policy speaks to that pretty specifically, so we probably have to deviate from policy and revise our policy in some way, shape, or form.
I'd be glad to take a look at that.
Well, I think we do have weight in it for local.
It's when it becomes, no. Mr. Joseph can speak to that as well, but.
Listen, you know, the law firm has already opined in, and it, it's okay for us to go back and revisit that, but we do have to be fair to every single person, we can't, we can't make a policy of biases. Okay, so, and I, and I think it's important that you also make clear that, that our local businesses have an opportunity to participate.
Yeah.
If they choose to do so, great, if they don't choose to do so, there's nothing really we can do about that.
That would be fair.
But yeah, and I'm not exactly saying whether or not they participate, I'm saying if, you know, one said a hundred thousand, the other one said ninety-eight thousand, if that ninety, if that hundred thousand one was local, I would want them to get it over the ninety-eight thousand.
Understood, and like Dr. Lewis said, the board policy does indicate that we do favor local vendorship when it is a tie, and that is the deciding factor, is that if it is a tie, both vendors came in at a hundred thousand, local vendorship will actually win on that one.
Ken, if, if you don't mind sending it to me, I'd like to take a look at that.
Sure, sure, I can send it to you.
Thank you.
Maybe when we, maybe when we look at it, we can give weight, we can give green points for local proximity of delivery would have less impact on the environment if they didn't have to bring it down from, anyway, there's creative ways to look at it.
Yeah, there is, we just want to make sure we can legally pass muster.
Well, I'm just saying, carbon footprint is important. Okay, thank you very much, and I don't see any other questions. Yeah, I think, I think carbon footprint's important. Ten point zero five, Purchase Exception G, this is your professional services, you have two items, one from WHS and one from Raptor Technologies. Any questions on either of those? All right, seeing none, that takes us to your regular monthly reports. Ten point zero six is your sole source in volatile purchases, this is your fuel as well as.
I will just mention, like everybody else, the fuel has been problematic for us in terms of all of our vehicles, and we are actually, our state superintendent has requested latitude from the federal government to allow us to use Esra funds if need be to try and defray the impact of the increased costs on fuel, so we're waiting to hear that response.
No, that's, that's wonderful to hear, because.
Yeah, because I just, I just spent sixty dollars for half a tank of gas.
Yeah, that's, that's something. Okay, that takes us to ten point zero seven, competitively bid purchases, you have playground surface material and your local internet WAN, your wide area network services, are there any questions on either of those? Seeing none, ten point zero eight was emergency repair for Columbus Public Library of the gutters, and ten point zero nine was an emergency construction for the sanitary sewer line replacement at Eddie, which was desperately needed.
Yeah, we just.
Holy cow. We never, we never get questions on emergency sewer repair, I'm telling you, that was, that was, that was emergency. A long time ago. Okay, any questions? Seeing none, that takes us to the ten point ten, your monthly budget adjustments to account for some federal funding, as well as the library system is in their budget adjustment. Any questions on, my computer's really acting up here, keeps bouncing around. And that takes us to ten point eleven, your monthly financial statements, are there any questions on those? Seeing none, that takes us to ten point one two, our monthly donations, and just a real quick thank you to all who participated, I think I counted some thirty or thirty-two donations from across the board, I mean, from Thank You Anonymous, but also from, from PTAs, from corporations, from individuals, from just across the board, it was really impressive, supporting athletics, robotics, academics, just future farmers of America, everything, it's just, we're blessed to live in a generous community that supports public education, and that, that completes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, thank you to the board, this completes all of our committee reports. We do have one discussion item at the bottom, and it's regarding our strategic planning process that we will be entering in next year? The year after next year?
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-four. So for, starting with our whole board training, we're going to have our whole board training centered around the strategic planning process as we get ready to take on the big piece where we include our community stakeholders, and it's this kind of a lengthy process, so we will have our whole board training centered around, centered around our function and purpose and why this is important to do this. We have been running with a working liquid, fluid document of our strategic plan each year, we've just been kind of updating along the way, so this time we're getting ready to, getting, heading to preparation to know what our roles are and what the process is and what it will look like, and so we're, we're going to take some time for that on April the fourteenth. And in doing that, we will also pick, take on some of, some best practices. Looking at the criteria for a governance team recognition, we're going to make them our best practices starting, starting now. So we got our public audit presentation that we always currently do. And I was really kind of surprised to know that, that wasn't a norm for school boards. The annual public review of our code of conduct and our norms that we normally do. We have not done them so far this year, so we will be doing those next month. They're normally done in, in January. It seems like it was just yesterday, but it wasn't. You know, the reason why we feel like that is because we had the extension because of the COVID shutdown. And so we read them a little later than normal. So we're trying to get back on, get back on a regular routine like everyone else in the, in the school district and in the country. So we can have some evidence of true and consistent examples of how we function, you know, as a, as a exemplary governance team. And so we can be focused on, you know, working and focused on student achievement and what we need to do to support the superintendent's recommendation for those resources that will support student achievement because that is our primary focus. And we want to make sure we stay on target with that. So if we have, don't have any questions. We do have a very quick, brief executive session on a personnel matter. And then we can, we can move along.
Can I just take a moment of personal privilege?
Go ahead and beat your chest.
I just want to recognize Spencer High School. Because for the first time, they made it to the state championship, won the state championship. The last time. The last time they were there was in nineteen sixty-two. And it was phenomenal to see the number of people who came out, including their board representative, Vanessa Jackson, and our board chair, Pat Hugley-Green. I know Naomi was at several of the playoff games. They felt the support, they felt the love of this community and so did I. And it was phenomenal.
It was.
Mighty, mighty Greenway. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On and off the court.
I was going to say, they are equally as good a young men off the court as they are on. I would also, Madam Chair, if I may, also, we're having, hosting the first robotics competition at CSU this Friday and Saturday. You all received invitations to that. Like to encourage you if you can to stop by and see that. And also just a recognition of Lisa Seeger, who is named as one of the top ten Teacher of the Year finalists for the state of Georgia. Many great things going on in MCSD. And I'm happy to see that people throughout the state are recognizing the great work that's being done by our teachers every day in our classrooms.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move to executive session.
That's fine, thank you. Brief, personnel matter. Thank you all, we're adjourned.